All right, good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for joining us this evening. We have many things to get to and a lot of special recognition. But first, we're going to go ahead and do our land acknowledgement, which will be read by our student board representative Sullivan.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples in the Cowlets Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you Sullivan. All right, next on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda. If we'll entertain a motion for that. I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second it?
Yes, I'm out. I'm going to fight over it.
All right, it's been written, seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, next up on our agenda, we have special recognition, the Evergreen Award. I'm going to call up Janay Gomes this evening, who's going to present for us. Good evening, Janay.
Good evening Superintendent Boyd, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Tonight is our first quarter Evergreen Awards. We also have our contracted employees for ABM and Chartwells that will be presenting as well. Our recipients are nominated by their colleagues in three separate categories. We have one for classified, certificated, and the third is either an administrator or a team. And this evening will be a team. Some of the criteria includes dedication and professional poise in fulfilling their duties. They are a model of excellence. They inspire students and staff of all backgrounds and they promote positive and effective environment in their position. And while it's impossible to recognize every deserving employee who is nominated, the intent of this award is to celebrate individuals who model the image of a high-quality employee here in Evergreen. So, we're going to begin this evening with classified recipient from Pacific Middle School. The principal was unable to make it this evening, so she did do a video and then I'm going to ask the senior director of secondary to speak.
My name is Hannah and I am the principal at Pacific Middle School. While I'm not able to be there in person tonight, I did not want to miss this opportunity to publicly celebrate our amazing transition coach Lori Booker. Not a day goes by that I do not see Lori hard at work in service of our students, staff, and community. She works so diligently to make sure that kids and families have what they need to be successful here at school. She looks for opportunities to serve in every capacity and she fills so many roles here at Pacific. So Lori, thank you so much for all of your hard work. Thank you for how much of yourself you pour into this job and I know that our students, staff, and community is better for knowing you. Thank you and congratulations on this award. You truly deserve it.
Good evening and I am very appreciative to be here to talk about Lori. And what I'm going to do is actually, I'm going to read the nomination for Lori. I think that says a lot when our colleagues nominate people for the really important work that they're done. And Lori was nominated by Abby Troffer, who is our family and community outreach coordinator at Burton Elementary School. And this is what Abby had to say. Lori Booker goes above and beyond for her students at Pacific Middle School. The Viking Village is a place where students feel seen, accepted, and safe. Students are constantly coming in to get what they need, whether it is a new pair of shoes, school supplies, clothes, someone to listen to their feelings, or food for their families. Lori does what she can to support all students and families. And on top of that, Lori hosts the fresh food pantry with help from Sher Clark County Food Bank. Lori is welcoming to families of all backgrounds. She helps them shop, assists with paperwork, and creates a safe place for families to get food when it can be challenging or difficult to share that this may be a difficult time for their families. Lori Booker is a tremendous resource, advocate, and friend. Congratulations.
Do you have family or anybody here?
I do.
Do you feel like I could do something?
Oh, I am fortunate to have family and friends here today. And... My husband Brad is here, my daughter Emily, my best friend and cousin Connie, and also Abby Troffer is here as well. So, I appreciate their support. And I do have several family members working in the Evergreen School District, which is a privilege. And this honor today is humbling and I just appreciate the opportunity by my administrators and staff and to serve kids and to do what's best for kids. And this award actually could go to any of the transition coaches, any of the FCRC coordinators, because that's what they do. They give kids the opportunity, the best chance, to have a good experience here in our Evergreen Schools. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next recipient is a certificated staff member. If we could have Principal Scott Eppinger come up.
Good evening Board of Directors and Superintendent Boyd. Great to see all of you and great to be here as a proud principal and to share in this opportunity to recognize Mr. Jack Diano, teacher here at Furcrest and the recipient of the certificated Evergreen Award for this quarter. Mr. Diano has taught third, fourth, and fifth at Furcrest. He's been with us for 23 years and is a valued member of not only our staff but our Furcrest community. And so, we each come into this field to make an impact and we don't always realize the impact that we make. And that's what makes this so special is this nomination actually came from a parent. And so, I wanted to share with you what this parent said about our very own Mr. Diano. Mr. Diano was my son's teacher last year. He went above and beyond to help him improve his reading skills. He worked with him during recess time and one-on-one when he was able to. I was hoping to get my son into the district's reading summer program that is sometimes offered at the end of the school year. Unfortunately, it was not offered last year and Mr. Diano volunteered to work with my son during the summer break to keep his literacy skills up. Nearly every Monday during summer, Mr. Diano met with my son at the library and worked for an hour on a variety of literacy skills. Thanks to his support, my son did not lose any skills he had gained during third grade and moved up in reading an entire grade level because of Mr. Diano's efforts. He is an excellent teacher, truly. He truly wants his students to succeed and lets them know he cares about them. My son has frequently stated he wants to go back to third grade just so he can have Mr. Diano again. I think a lot of us would love to go back to third grade to have Mr. Diano again. So, congrats, Mr. Diano, and thank you for everything you do for our students, staff, and the community.
You know, it's hard to stand up here when you're used to lifting kids up and give them praise and then you get to sit there on the other side and receive praise. So, it's kind of humbling. This is for my dad, who in seventh grade told me, "Maybe you want to be a teacher." And I said, "No, I hate writing." So, thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Our third award this evening is a team from Heritage and Derek Garrison, principal will be speaking.
Here representing Heritage High School, a couple of great educators who are doing awesome things, not only for our building and our students, but really the district-wide, embodying some of the skills and attributes that we want in all of our educators. I couldn't be more proud to be here tonight to recognize these two amazing individuals. You know, a few precepts or values that we hold true at Heritage that I'd love to hire this way, I love to foster this, is love of students, love of learning, and love of profession. And these two have done an excellent job in every regard. A couple of math teachers, but beyond that, they have set an example of those ideas of loving students, loving the idea of learning, that natural curiosity to be better, to take on new challenges, and then love of profession of just being open-minded and willing to share their ideas. We call it protected risk at our school and they've just been doing a great job. I'm going to read some words that were shared and this kind of gets to the, how it relates to the district and that idea of belonging for each and success for all. This is what a fellow educator who's not a Timber Wolf, but this is what they had to say about Kevin O'Rourke and Nancy Garcia Castillo. Nancy and Kevin are leaders in the building thinking classroom and illustrative math integration. They allow anyone to come into their classrooms and observe how they have implemented BTC into the classroom. They've been instrumental in getting doubtful teachers across the district on board with the pedagogy. They've shared their lesson plans, their tests, their resources, their experiences. They believe wholeheartedly that each student deserves quality questions as well as the opportunity to experience a quality education. They walk the walk for our students in Evergreen School District and they certainly do at Heritage High School. Kevin O'Rourke and Nancy Garcia.
This is Nancy Garcia. We've been like partners, I guess, for the last 10, 11 years. I can say that I wouldn't be the same teacher I am today without Nancy and all the things we've been willing to take on and risks and trying and just daily effort. I'm so thankful. I got my boys here and my wife's here with my boys. But, we're very thankful. I'm so appreciative of her, all the support from the schools, Deanne Morris, Mr. Garrison, Mrs. Key. Anything else? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, I started the first year that I worked here, I was a staff assistant in his class. And then I transitioned into teaching and now, well, it's really nice to see this. Thank you so much.
So thankful. Thank you.
Thank you all. Oh, yeah.
Do you want us to come out? Craig?
For a situation.
and they also have recognitions this evening. We could start with ABM.
Good evening, respected members of the board. Superintendent Boyd, good evening, sir. First and foremost, well, I'm Art Salinas. I'm the district manager for ABM. Today, I'm joined by Dean Fuchs, who is our Vice President of Education, who's also spent many years servicing the Evergreen Public Schools. First and foremost, we're honored to be able to be here and thank you for allowing us this platform to be able to recognize two outstanding individuals who have put in a lot of time for, you know, with us. In fact, so to my left, I have Anna Lopez. She is the day lead custodian over at Mountain View High School. She just celebrated five years with us. To my right, I have Mr. Stephen Wesley, who just celebrated his six years last week with us. So, as we were going through this process, there was a lot of names that kind of came to mind, like who's, you know, deserving of this. And there was a lot of people, but these two really stood out. And some words that I was thinking about, as I can describe what they do day in, day out, it's not only what they do, it's how they do it that really separates them. Their level of hospitality, the feeling you get when you interact with them. In fact, Mr. Eppinger is here, joining us this evening as well, and I'll call him up here in just a second to be able to speak on Stephen's behalf. But, we're lucky to have them, you know. I've been with the company for about three years and I remember my first interaction with both. And it wasn't so much, my first impression is not so much what they knew, it's about how much they cared. When you speak with them, you'll quickly be able to understand, they care about the community, they care about the staff, they care about the students that they serve each and every single day. When you speak with them, they talk about my school, they talk about our kids. And they do it with class, they do it with consistency. I mean, it's, you know, the stuff that they do day in, day out is very important. And let's face it, I mean, I can be good for a day. They do it every single day and they deliver. And we couldn't be any prouder of them and we're lucky to have them. So, I'll pass the mic over to Mr. Fuchs if you have a few words, sir.
Sure. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for giving this, this opportunity today to present these awards to Stephen and Anna. And, you know, I think this is so meaningful to us, just in that, one of the most important things, I think about a great custodian is somebody that gets a good feeling about doing good things for other people and really taking care of the students and the staff and providing a clean, safe learning environment. And Anna and Stephen, I think, you know, very much just instill those values and are great ambassadors for those values. So, very, very meaningful for us and thank you for allowing us to make this presentation. And Art's got a couple of words, but, you know, one of the things I want to just share too, as part of an award, they, so much of what they do is, is not for themselves, but taking care of other people. So, part of our award today, Stephen, I'd like to just present an extra $100 in cash for you. Spend for yourself, you know, and I think that that's important and for you too, Anna. The spend for yourself and everything you do for other people, I think it's important to do for yourself.
And so, thank you, sir. And Mr. Eppinger, if you're around, sir, are you? There he is. You thought you just had one presentation today.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'd like to just say a couple of things about Stephen. So, Stephen came into us at Furcrest after replacing a custodian that retired that had, I think, 22 years in the building. So, the building was immaculate, Stephen had some big shoes to fill, but he hit the ground running, such a positive attitude, such a hard worker, and he maintained that building and give him a lot of credit for why it's in the shape that it is today. The second thing, we know about relationships, that they're not the only thing, but they're everything. And recently, Stephen was on a leave and every single day, I had students come up to me, I had staff come up to me and ask, "Where's Mr. Stephen? When's he going to be back?" And so, probably the most popular decision that I've made since I've been back at Furcrest or thing that I've said is, "Stephen's coming back tomorrow." So, just the relationships that he has, the support that he provides in our building, but he's also just another adult that's there for our kids to support him. And so, thank you so much, Stephen.
Thank you again for allowing us this opportunity. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we have two nominees for tonight, two of our award winners. One of them couldn't be here with us tonight, and that is Robin Bergwell. Robin has been an employee here for 30 years in the district and she works in the Heritage Kitchen doing all the early morning prep. She's one of those people who's quiet and diligent, continues to show up daily. Most days, you wouldn't even know she's here, but she's steadfast and just diligent in her operations and shy, but does such a great job. As we started talking about her service here this morning, we estimate that she's probably served close to 75 million meals here through the district. You know, if you start looking at the daily operation, she mainly services all the elementary schools in production in the kitchen there. We went over to see her this morning because we knew she, you know, she starts at 5:00 in the morning and we presented her with her awards at that time. So, we wish she could have been here, but we wanted to let you know we did recognize her and have that conversation with her this morning. My name is Kirk Mustaine. I'm the resident district manager for Chartwells. I probably should have said that first. Our second person here is Melinda, our office manager, Melinda Wilson. Melinda is the heartbeat of our operation. She touches everybody in our, in all of our operations. She deals with all of our students, our leads, the folks in CNS. She manages our point-of-sale system, our bookkeeping, and so many facets of what we do here. She comes in with a smile every day, she's willing to go anywhere, and I think she's probably been where you in five or six schools today, at least? At least. She probably visits at least half a dozen schools a day, troubleshooting, fixing, helping. And we can't say enough about what she does. She has such a great knowledge of the operation and works with all of our folks just daily and we couldn't do it without her. We're so proud of her. So, thank you.
Always fun to recognize our well-deserving employees. All right, next on our agenda, very special recognition. We are here to recognize and honor Director Bradford, as this is her last school board meeting. She's been serving the Evergreen Public Schools for 24 years in this role. If you think about that, 24 years is two cycles of students. So, students who started kindergarten, graduated, and then a whole nother set of students started school again and then finished. It's an amazing commitment. Most people can't commit to that type of service for, you know, a few years or maybe a couple of months. And Victoria's been here every single Tuesday night, dedicating a good portion of her life to serving the students of this district, always with equity and our students at the heart of every single decision. And I know that there are lots of people here that are here to recognize her and talk about her during public comments. I know that the other board members would like to say a few words. But, we're going to start with a short video. Is Craig?
Hopefully, the first image will make you smile.
I hope. You know how I love seeing myself on that big screen?
Yeah. Trust me, I was thinking that the whole time.
They missed one of the Galen.
I thought it was going to be a huge win or a huge loss. I'm not sure where we are.
Thank you and your team for putting that together. So, Victoria, I know that some of the board would like to say a few things.
I'm going to be very brief because now I'm the one left to be the crier on the board now that you're not going to be here anymore. But, I've only been here for less than two years and you've been an invaluable resource to me. I appreciate you and all that you've done and I'm going to leave it at that. So, thank you.
I have somewhat more to say. Of course I do, because as I was thinking about it, I made notes too, so that I wouldn't get off track. As I was thinking about it, I think we met before, the school district bought a plot of land next to my neighborhood, which is now the site of Emerald Elementary School, and I came to the board meeting. I think that's when we met. And I came to the board meeting to stand up in public comments and thank them for giving that plot of land a better destiny than the gas station and apartment buildings that were originally slotted for that. It was a mixed-use kind of deal. And I think our second long interaction was, you remember the board coffees from all those years ago, is that I, my daughter had just started fourth grade, she had a rocky start to full-time Excel, and I went in with questions about that and you stayed with me for, I think, 90 minutes to two hours afterwards, just answering all the questions that I had. And you continued to do that. If I'm thinking of that as 2008-ish, that's a long time to know a person. And you continued to do that from all that time to this. So, between then and my appointment to the board and for years after, you add perspective. You've been a mentor and a friend. Most remarkably, I think, is the personal conviction that I have about your willingness to work so hard to establish and reestablish good human relationships with everyone around You believe in good relationships. This is where I have to go to my notes because it's happening to me too. And you've worked with all your energy, all your energy to create and maintain them. You've held every role a board member can hold and given half a lifetime to this work. And I think our second long interaction was, you remember the board coffees from all those years ago, is that I, I, my daughter had just started fourth grade. She had a rocky start to full-time Excel, and I went in with questions about that, and you stayed with me for, I think, 90 minutes to two hours afterwards, just answering all the questions that I had. And you continued to do that. If I'm thinking of that as 2008-ish, that's a long time to know a person, and you've continued to do that from all that time to this. So, between then and my appointment to the board and for years after, you add perspective. You've been a mentor and a friend. Most remarkably, I think, is the personal conviction that I have about your willingness to work so hard to establish and reestablish good human relationships with everyone around You believe in good relationships. This is where I have to go to my notes, because it's happening to me, too. And you've worked with all your energy, all your energy, to create and maintain them. You've held every role a board member can hold and given half a lifetime to this work. Well, you know, I-
You didn't have to add anything.
You really didn't have to say that. I don't. Okay. Yes, you do. Vic's service is focused on the welfare of students and the opportunities that they should have in schools, in every meeting and every conversation. I think it would be accurate to say that you and Joan together caused Henrietta Lacks' Health and Bioscience High School to be a thing here. And the number of students that that's helped since it was built, I can't remember the year, but it was during the Great Recession, when it seemed like opportunity for students was fading. And this board, led by Vic, created more during all that time. Full-day kindergarten comes to mind before the state even paid for it. And I could list things for hours about this, but I thank you for your service, your devotion to me and to this board. I'll never forget it, and I'll always take your call.
I guess it's my turn. I'll keep it quick, because you're not going anywhere. You can't get rid of us that easy, or at least me. I just want to say thank you. From the very beginning of my interest as a school board director, from talking to me in the beginning and guiding me and helping me realize my potential, you've been a guiding light through this process. You've become an incredible friend. A lot of those pictures, as I was going through my photos, I did all my crying then because those were pulled from memories, great memories that I have with you and the board as a group, and I am going to forever treasure those and look forward to many more. Now that you're not a board member, we can all get together, well, not all, but you can get together with two of us, and it's no longer considered a meeting. So, that's, you know, the positives. So, thank you. Thank you for always believing in me. Thank you for being there for me during troubled times. You've not only just been a board member and a colleague, you've been a dear friend to me, and I appreciate everything you've done. And your legacy in this district will live on till, it'll never die. It'll never die. Your name is on buildings. Gila is part of your legacy. Henrietta Lacks is, you know, that's your legacy, and we will continue to carry it for you. So, thank you. John, did you want to say something?
I would.
All right.
So, Victoria, we, we're not poets necessarily, but we put together a little poem for you. And of course, nobody had the guts to come up and sing it, so I'm, or to say it, so that's, I'm left with that honor. But I'm very honored to share a little, a little bit in the spirit of, in the, in the style of spoken word, in the spirit of the things that you, you bring to us. "In the heart of Evergreen, where the river meets the shore, Victoria Bradford, a beacon, student-centered to her core. 24 years, an odyssey on the educational sea. A glass ball wave, her gift, a symbol of her legacy. Listen now to the spoken word, the rhythm of her tale, and the commitment to students unfurling like a sail. In the classrooms ebb and flow, where dreams take flight, Victoria stood steadfast, a lighthouse in the night. Fine arts and music, a canvas for her dreams, she painted melodies and symphonies in many vibrant streams. A maestro of potential, she orchestrated grace, in the spoken word, her legacy finds its place. Equity her compass, navigating through the mist, a spoken word manifesto in justice, she persists. Breaking down barriers with passion so intense, Victoria's legacy an anthem for making a difference. Communities gathered, a chorus by her side, in the spoken word, their voices unified. Victoria, the bridge connecting hearts with skill, a symphony of unity echoing still. As she steps away from the board, waves gently applaud, in the spoken word, a tribute heartfelt in odd. Victoria Bradford, a captain on the sea, in the rhythm of gratitude, we say a fond farewell to thee. Victoria, we thank you with all of our hearts for the legacy you leave. It is truly a work of art." The board, board governance team has a little gift to reflect the spirit of this poem.
So, Victoria's opening up her, her gift, and I just wanted to say something else, too, because we, we could, like Rob said and Jenny said, there, there's so many things that are built with Victoria's legacy. I don't know what board service is without Victoria, because she's been here the entire time, but I've been here, all of us. And, and so, I do remember one thing that years ago, we were right before going to a conference, that I think it was the day of, they had a showing of that film, I think it was Paper Tigers. And it was about aces and the student trauma and things that our kids face. And I remember having a conversation with Victoria, because I think we drove up to the conference together, and we talked a lot about schools and, and what it meant for our kids, and we really talked about legacy a lot, that conversation. And it was so important to Victoria that we make sure that our kids have great buildings to go to school. And at the time, Legacy was housed behind Evergreen and some portables, and it was one of the important things that we really worked on. And when I think about the equitable outcomes for students and just that drive that, and the conversations that she had with all of the school board members over the years before all of us, many of you that are in the audience today, that just really drove some of the big decisions and really great outcomes for students.
I also have a gift for you from my family. There's a photograph that's on your Facebook page. I really, really liked, and it's like when somebody leaves service here who's had a tremendous impact, I've sort of become, what I do is I call my daughter, who is an accomplished digital artist, and I gave her this picture. I gave her several other pictures, and we talked about some ideas back and forth, and I had, I conspired with Alex about a couple of things, too. Thank you for coming. So that my Rachel could produce Where'd It Go? I have to get it right here. This. So, that's a reminder of that picture, and I think it captures, and I'm no good at certain things. Framing something is something I'm no good at, so you may have to redo this, but- So, it's right side up on the screens. I also have the digital copies, so that if you change your mind about the frame size or anything, you can have it printed again, or put it on your social media, or whatever you want to do, maybe nothing. I will tell her that. I will tell her that. But it's you holding hands with a child, guide the child, that really just captures what I think you're all about in this work. Well, I think you do.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Yes, you do. Okay. I don't want this to get broken. I had to write something down, because I was a little worried, because as Jackie mentioned, I'm the crier of the place, so now she gets that honor, and I'm happy to pass it along to her. So, I just wanted to say a few things, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of reading from this, but I don't want to miss anybody. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, for your beautiful words, just, you guys are like family to me. And I want to thank my, my home family, my, my girls, and my son-in-law, and my mom. Oh, and I see another student who's also my daughter's best friend that's been with us since kindergarten. You know, my girls had to sacrifice a lot of time that I spent, you know, coming to meetings, and I wouldn't be there on Tuesday nights, and they had, when they were younger, they had to have a babysitter, and, you know, it was always, you know, something, and I'd always be running to some meeting or activity in, in the district, and, and then we always had piles of paperwork, books, and other school board clutter, which I am now going through and will be happy to bring back to the district. I, I have had just such a privilege to serve on this board over these last 24 years. I've had, I've met so many amazing, extraordinary people, and they, most of you have become lifelong friends, and you know who you are. But I want to talk tonight about our wonderful staff, because I think sometimes our staff, there's misconceptions about them, and I want to make sure that they know how I feel about you all. We have so many wonderful people that work for the district and are so dedicated. They're hard-working people. They're devoted to doing what's best for our, our students and, and our families. From Central Office, where our staff give support to those in the classroom, and others who work closely with our students every day. I know Central Office is often a mystery to many people, and the easiest place to think of cutting when budgets are tight. But I would encourage people to gain understanding of the critical roles these people play every day. Day-to-day, they make sure this district is operated in a responsible way to ensure our students receive the education they deserve, oftentimes with challenging laws and regulations, limited budgets, and resources. They are the folks that prepare much of the data we use to guide our decisions on everything from academic performance to maintaining strong and accurate fiscal health for the district. They make sure our staff receives their paychecks on time. That's always a good one. And they assist when they have any number of HR decision, questions. They work with our teachers and principals as coaches, leading professional development, and helping with technology. They maintain our facilities, manage our food services, and maintain our, the supplies. Getting those supply truck deliveries is always very exciting. In an emergency, multiple departments are in charge of implementing our crisis management plans. We have specialists that manage our programs for special ed and English language learners, and community, family and community resource centers, and for our homeless students. Our communications department keeps our website and social media filled with contact, content, and it's all fun, cute content. When you have kids, what better things to be taking pictures of, right, Craig? They also are putting out information that's critical, information for our families and the community. Our video department makes sure we have professional broadcasts to keep us up to date on many topics, and lovely parting videos. And when you call or walk into Central Office, you are greeted by pleasant people happy to help you get your needs met. Of course, our teachers are the soul of our district, and we have some of the most talented teachers around. Never before have they had to teach in such challenging circumstances. Obviously, COVID was like nothing we had experienced before, but things are, things were changing before that. Demographic changes, skyrocketing drug threats, and students with more mental health needs than ever before. Our need for additional supports in the classroom became more important than ever, right at a time when it became harder than ever to hire them. Political rhetoric has brought out the worst in, in discussions about equity, history, sex ed, and book banning, oftentimes creating fear. In spite of that, our community supports our teaching staff, and we believe in you. One of the most important things a board does is to hire the superintendent. I feel confident that our district is in good hands with John Boyd at the helm. He has only been with us for just over a year, but in that short time, I have found him to be the kind of leader any district would be proud to have in charge. He is a person of honor, compassionate, and steady. His commitment to students is endless, and he understands improvement only comes if you have a plan and you surround yourself with people who are able to implement that plan. John's leadership team is an educated and dynamic group that I have no doubt will succeed in making sure every student will reach their potential. In the last 24 years, I've worked with many wonderful board members. I have learned from them, starting with Joan Skilton, she's a legend in this district, who helped me maneuver that steep learning curve when I followed her onto the board, encouraging me to listen first and learn everything I can about how the district works and who the people are. I have since observed over the years that those who follow that same method seem to become the best board members. I will be leaving this group of board members just as a board member, but like Jenny said, we, we're friends forever. We have been through a lot together, and you couldn't ask for a better team. Represented here are single parents, parents with children who have had either an IEP or 504 plan, experience in the foster care system, and mental health issues in their families. We understand the challenges your families face, and we understand it because it's happened to us personally. I'm getting emotional. We have all been advocates for public education before we were on the board, and I plan to continue as I look to the future. To Mr. Wilson, congratulations on running a good campaign. I believe you care about the students, and I hope you come onto the board with a good faith and intention to become part of the team. You might discover you have more in common with them than not. To the parents, I have always admired those of you who advocate for your children. It can be very daunting to understand a system as large as Evergreen, but please know there are people here who want to help you and your children. Come to board meetings when you can, or write to the board. Any member of the board is happy to meet with you outside a board meeting. Stay connected with the teachers and principal at your school, and develop relationships with them before there's a problem. Remember, communication is a two-way thing. The district is always looking for better ways to communicate with you. Please participate whenever possible. The most important people in the equation is the students. They deserve the best from all of us. Our kids are facing things we would never dreamed of when we were kids. With all of us working together, we can have, they can have a future where they can reach their fullest potential. And now, I have to tell you a story that they've all heard a million times, and they're going to gag, but it's, it's really what I believe about our kids. My two favorite days of the year are the, is the first day of school and graduations. And the reason I like them so much is that when I look in their faces on either end, they look almost the same. There's some that are so excited, they can't wait, this is a new moment in their life, and they're moving forward, and they're very excited and energized. Then there's other ones that are scared out of their minds, and they don't know what the heck is going to happen, what they're going to do, but here they are, and they're hoping for the best. And we've got parents that are so proud of their kids and this next phase of their life, and it's going to be very, very hard for me come June, that I won't be up on that stage giving those diplomas out, because I am so proud that our district, in our district, our board is at every graduation and hands those diplomas out, and it is a highlight. And I've, I never got tired of doing it. It was always so fun. So, I'll be thinking of you guys, and maybe I'll be in the stands, and I can just whoop it up there. So, again, I want to thank everybody for everything. I will always care about Evergreen Public Schools, and I will hold on to the amazing memories that I have- memories that I have made here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, you know I love to chat.
I wouldn't have expected anything less. That was beautiful. All right, um, we're going to move into public comments and I know that there are many of you who are signed up this evening that want to recognize Director Bradford and so we're going to hear, we're going to continue to hear some more fun stories and memories, I'm sure. Um, but we're going to go ahead and start with public comments. So any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole, may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff or the audience, although the board will not engage in dialogue. The board chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or to follow up at a later time on an issue raised during public comment. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. The time will be on the screen, so make sure you pay attention to the timer. There's no mechanism where a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. The individual may speak more, may speak more than once per regular meeting, even if there is more time remaining. Please state your name and district affiliation if any. We're going to go ahead and go in order of how people signed up this evening. Uh, first on the list is Camille Lohman. Camille, are you here? Okay, we'll get to the virtual right after Camille. Camille? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to the virtual. Do we know the name of the person's virtual? Rachel? Rachel Campbell is joining us virtual.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. I want to talk about substitute teachers and the shortage we're experiencing. There are conflicting dialogues as to why we have a sub shortage. The district, A, the district can't afford to pay for the amount of subs because teachers take advantage of their leave. I've heard this narrative since the strike. There can't possibly be any other reasons. Or B, local area subs are in high demand and don't take our open jobs because it's an underpaid position for the demanding work and lack of support in the classroom makes it unsafe even for the regular classroom teacher. The jury's out on why it exists, but I want to talk about how we're filling the sub shortage, how our methods masquerade as help and yet hurt us in the same move. We're depriving our children their music days, their PE days to fill shortages. We're taking away paraeducators to fill shortages, paraeducators to help teachers so desperately need since the neighborhood schools model turned every classroom teacher into a potential special education teacher, a dual role, same pay. Paraeducators where we have 88 positions open across the district as of last night. We're taking away the help we currently have to fill sub shortages. And now a suggestion, can we look at the district office employees whose salaries would fund two or even three paraeducators? Can we take those top admin and add emergency substitute to their credentials? Maybe some have forgotten, maybe some have gotten out of touch with what it's like to lead and inspire a class full of children, the children whose quality of education is their duty by definition. Some of them have never taught and yet they feel empowered and so bold to encroach on teachers' rights and classified staff's rights whenever they get the chance at every contract negotiation. Can we encourage or require? They share the easing of this burden. How else can we incentivize them to look past the nearsighted scapegoat and look at systemic reasons why this problem exists? Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. All right, next on the list to speak is Ally Jones. Hi, Ally.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, I am, uh, in my 14th year at Mill Plain Elementary. I'm also the mom of three Union High School graduates and I'm here, it's uncomfortable, but I'm here to let you know that I'm really disappointed in the direction that this district is going. I've always loved my job. It fills a huge purpose for me. It's everything I've ever wanted to do and as the world has become more complicated, public education has as well. And this year has been a huge game changer. Mill Plain forever has been a really happy, well-run school with, um, loving families and a dedicated staff and it is quite frankly chaotic in there right now. I, uh, there are several things to attribute that to. I do think that the neighborhood model that is, I mean, it felt like, it feels like it was just, let's take special ed students, dump them in, uh, general ed classrooms and cross our fingers and hope it works out and it's not working out at all. I want to read to you a letter that, or an email that I got from a parent. An email I have never, I've never received an email like this before. I asked the, the mom if she, um, if I had her permission to read it and she said yes and I'm obviously changing the name of the student. This was, uh, October 26th, 2023. "Hi Ms. Jones, I'm sorry to reach out this way, but I am concerned for Ann. While she thinks you are a great teacher and very nice, she asked me today if she can move to a different class. She said a lot of the kids in her class are mean and she doesn't feel safe. She is extremely sensitive, but also very, very quiet about her feelings if she is feeling anything other than excited or happy. When I asked her what was going on, she said there has been a lot of cussing, flipping people off, et cetera, with several of her classmates. She is very upset to see how other students disrespect you as well. All of this behavior actually scares her. The fact that she even told me all of this is pretty huge. There are obviously some very difficult students in your class this year. I feel like personally wise, you were the perfect choice for, of a teacher for Ann. In an ideal setting where students actually behaved as they should. I don't know what the best solution is. I don't want her to have to move classrooms because other kids are being disruptive, disrespectful and unkind. I don't have any delusions of my child being perfect, but I know how good and sweet she typically is." She goes on and on and I just, I, I was proud to hear about the wonderful celebrations in our district and I, hearing about your wonderful memories in Evergreen, Victoria, is something to feel really good about, but I think we need to be really honest about what's going on. Kids' needs are not being met. IEP minutes are not being met. Kids are running around schools screaming, hiding, cussing, yelling. It, it's, it's very concerning. This is a school, an elementary school. This is a crisis. I've never seen anything like it before and I think we need to acknowledge it. I think we can do some mitigations. We can make this better, but we need to back up and we need to put, we need a plan. This is not working. We are not serving the needs of our students. And I could go on and on and I think hopefully I've been clear about what's going on and I hope that you'll help. You're invited to come to my classroom anytime. Please spend an hour a day with me, just observing. If, if you want to help, I've got plenty for you to do, but I want people to know because I want there to be a sense of urgency so that we can fix this.
All right, thank you, Ally. Thank you. All right, next speaker is Alex Bradford. Alex?
Thank you so much for letting me speak here tonight. Um, where is my mother?
Hold on one second.
Okay. Victoria, honestly, is this your phone? Is this how we show our respect? Um, I am the proud daughter of Victoria Bradford, um, and I wanted to be here tonight, um, to, for my mother's final board meeting and to celebrate her 24-year legacy. Um, my, my mother's journey in education, it began when my older sister was in kindergarten. My mom was struck by a concern over boundary changes in the district. Um, she was concerned that there was a lack of parental involvement in the school leadership. She wondered why the district was making boundary changes without talking to parents first and so she joined forces with the famous Joan Skelton and they set to work to change that. Over the past few days, as I've been thinking about what I wanted to say here, the thing that I was struggling with the most was finding words to express how thankful I am to have a parent who was so involved and so involved that all of my memories of especially elementary school, my mom was there as I was going from my classroom to PE, there was my mom going to a meeting. Uh, my friends thought she worked at the school because she was so involved. In fact, she believed so much that, that parents and families should be involved in, in their children's education that when she heard that there was a shortage of volunteers in the school, she sent my great-grandma in and then my Grammy was there all the time, um, as a reading helper and she continued to do that for years. My mom really believes in the power of parental voice and this has really set the stage for the type of, of contributions that, um, that she's put forth with this, with this board. Growing up, she instilled in me in the importance in well-formed opinions, especially on issues facing our community. This approach, it wasn't just theoretical for my mom, it was a practice that she has embodied through her work. She has taught me the value of empathy, research and passionate advocacy. One thing that I have learned from my mom is that you can't just show up when things are going wrong. You can't just come into your school when there's a problem with your, with your kid. You can't just come to a board meeting and stay for public comments. You have to show up for everything. You have to be there volunteering in the schools. You have to know what's going on and my mom really embodied that. In fact, she didn't run for the board. She, she, before she ran for the board, she came to board meetings, almost every board meeting for four years, sometimes dragging my sister and I. She stayed throughout the entire meeting and for the workshops after and then, and also went to, to, uh, teacher training so that she knew what the teachers were teaching as well. We've already talked about, or some of the board members talked about, um, my mom's uh, commitment to the Henry Adelak School. Um, as a child, my mom talked about this school for years. I think it took 10 years for this school to be built and she just talked about the school constantly and what she hoped to achieve, achieve through the school. Um, and this is sort of decade-long journey to establish this institution. It was fueled by my mom's passion and commitment. Um, and I just remember her being so thrilled that you guys were able to build the school without having to, to pass a bond. That was really important. Um, I remember when I was going into, I think it was when I was going into high school, I was talking to my mom about how I wanted to take AP classes and there weren't enough AP classes and, um, in fact, at the time, there was only AP classes at one school, um, at one high school. Um, and so my mom started researching other schools around the country that had thriving AP, AP courses and she was intrigued by the school and this district in North Carolina where every high school student took at least one AP class. Um, and so my mom and Joan Skelton and the then superintendent Rick Melching, they went to North Carolina and they met with the school and they found out, um, how to, to sort of bring that over here and into this Evergreen School District. Um, and now every school in our district has AP classes. Um, and that's a direct result of my mom's dedication and her vision. I will say that being the daughter of a board member, it's not always easy. Um, I'm always very, very proud of my mom and the work that she has done. Um, but, um, there have been times in sort of, in the recent years where my mom has been on this board during challenging times, things like the recession and global pandemic and polarizing teacher strikes and as a daughter, it's, it's hard to see, um, to see negativity. It wasn't what I was raised, it, that wasn't how I was raised. Um, and that's not how my teachers taught me. But during these times of challenges, my mom has always reminded me that the focus must always be on the students. There are times when I want to say like, Mom, can't you just say something? Can't you, all of these people screaming at you all the time, can't you stand up and say something? And she's like, it's not important. What's important is finding out what the actual message is. What is the message here? And she always reminded me that the students, they have to come first and she would say, being divisive, that's easy. It's not going to solve anything though. Through all of this, my mom has remained focused on constructive civil solutions. She's always prioritized the student's future. Mom, your journey with the Evergreen School, School Board has been a story of dedication, vision and heartfelt commitment to every student. You've not only shaped a better educational landscape for this district, but you've also set an inspiring example for me and for frankly, probably thousands of students. I'm so proud of you and I love you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. All right, next up is, uh, David Nierenberg and I'm just going to remind everybody that the timer is on the, on the wall. Thank you, Alex.
I did warn her. She had to talk, three minutes.
Yeah, the timer's on the wall.
Alex, you're a tough act to follow. On behalf of our three children and 50,000 other children who've gone through two generations of 24 years of Victoria's service on this board, um, I want to say how grateful we are and how fortunate we feel that we met you when we moved here almost 28 years ago through the Harmony School. 24 years of service, beginning at a time when we were struggling to pass bonds and levies and you have led the, the district in so many constructive ways. Opportunity for all, academic excellence combined with the preservation of our tradition of historic strength in vocational education, rollout of educational technology, the long and successful tenure of several superintendents like Rick Melching and John Dieter, staying centered and effective through what reminds me of the Passover Seder litany of the ten plagues visited on Egypt. Haven't you endured all that and, and yet led us through that? And you did all of these things while raising two daughters as a single parent and while caring for sibling and for your mother who's with us tonight, um, and running and building your own successful business and being, as we saw in the video, a great dancer and jokester and friend. It is amazing what can be accomplished by not sleeping, Victoria. So we thank you and we honor you today for your decades of service to the Evergreen community, touching the lives of probably 50,000 students and their families. You've been a blessing to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, next to speak is Elise Petosa. Is Elise here tonight? I don't see Elise coming forward. All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, move on. Representative Paul Harris.
Hi, Paul.
Hey, how you doing? I thought I missed this, so I'm glad I was driving back from Olympia for a little bridge thing. Um, but Victoria, I have note, I have no notes, Victoria, so this could really be dangerous. But I do remember being locked in a room with Victoria to discuss whether or not we were going to put AstroTurf on, uh, McKenzie Stadium and it was a really late school board night and it was a million dollars back then, which was a lot of money. And I remember us, uh, we were there till two in the morning because we didn't agree, but we did agree at the end and, uh, I think you've replaced the AstroTurf since then. That was, that shows my age. Um, I think you've replaced it since then and it's probably better AstroTurf, to be quite frank. But, uh, I want to thank you for your service. My opportunity was to serve with you, uh, on the school board and, uh, it's good for me to be here tonight to hear some other issues, to be quite frank, and it made me think I need to attend more often. I heard, uh, some interesting paradigms that were talked about earlier and we don't properly fund, uh, some things in our state and one of them is our subs and, uh, so I heard that. Another is we don't, uh, fund paraeducators properly and it's going to be difficult to get a good paraeducators. You have 88 openings. That is not unusual as you look around and we can do better. Uh, you might not like how I'd approached that because I would probably- You might not like how I'd approached that because I would probably give you dedicated funds to that just to make sure that that happens. And I know it's difficult at times, but we're having that discussions in the state, and I hope, I'm very confident that we will do that. Victoria, it was a privilege to serve with you, I believe, for either five or six of my beautiful 10 years on this board. But I think over half of them, I was with you. We hired a great superintendent during that time. We did some great work. Times are different now, just different challenges. We had challenges then, different challenges now. Just want to thank you for the time and the sacrifice you have given to this district and to help my kids get educated. So thank you so much, Victoria.
Thank you, Paul. All right, next is Skylar Haas.
Skylar Haas, former director for the Evergreen Public Schools. Victoria, this is a very special evening. I'm here to honor you as a great friend, but to recognize you as a true mentor. When I first came on the board, now many years ago, I remember Victoria sitting me down, looking at me, and saying, it's about the kids. Remember, it's about the kids. And she also did tell me, listen before you talk. And those were two great lessons that I took to heart in the time that I served on this board. And it made me a better board member, and I was just so inspired, Vic, by your just steadfast dedication to education, doing what's right, transparency, and your endless expression of passion for what education could do for people. It really shaped my views on education. I had some opportunity to spend a little bit of time in Olympia, and I took those lessons that you gave me and shared them with some of the folks I worked with up there. I was trying to think of a word, Vic, that, you know, captures, you know, captures you and your contribution here. And the word I came up with, as I was driving the car with Rona here, you're legendary. You are absolutely legendary. There are dozens of buildings that you drive by in this district that really are the product of your vision and commitment. There are tens of thousands of students, as David mentioned, whose lives were impacted by the decisions you made and your commitment to their future. Dozens of programs. The time I served on the board, literally dozens of innovative programs that made education better for our students. You are truly legendary, and your commitment and your passion made this a better district. And I can't thank you enough for what you did for me to make me a better educator and to better understand what happens in these buildings and why it's so important. And you really shaped this community, and you have made such an impression. Very few people have had made the mark on this community that you have, Vic, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Skylar. All right, next is Andrea Kenniston.
Andrea Kenniston, community member, parent. So on behalf of the community, the parents, the students, and the taxpayers, I would like to thank the school board members, past and present, for your service. You essentially volunteer your time to serve the community and do your very best to balance the competing needs of finite resources. Tough decisions must be made. Your due diligence benefits the students, the faculty, and the taxpayers. It must often be a stressful and seemingly thankless job and be tough on one's mental and physical health as well as on one's family's, particularly in a contentious year such as this one. I would like to expend a special thank you to Victoria Bradford, who has served on the board just shy of 25 years. Thank you, Victoria. Among her many contributions, Victoria was instrumental in leading us through times of massive growth. Her leadership was key in articulating to the voters how important it was to pass a massive bond measure back in 2002, which needed a supermajority to pass and which resulted in the building of Union High School, among many other improvements. Had that not happened, students would have likely needed to double-shift in overcrowded, inadequate existing facilities, and the quality of education for students would have been impeded for years to come. 50,000 students have benefited from Victoria's contributions, and the taxpayers can rest assured that hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent wisely. Thank you, Victoria, for essentially volunteering to take this on. Victoria has done more than this, so much more, from the founding of Harmony Elementary's PTA back in the early 90s to currently serving on the foundation board as well as the school board, and I'm sure there's lots more. All of this while raising two wonderful daughters, as a single parent, running her own business to support her family in the meantime. How she had time is a mystery. Victoria is an amazing person, and her dedication, commitment, and contribution, particularly through these trying times, is acknowledged and appreciated. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you very much. All right, next is Holly Williams. Hi, Holly.
Hi, how are you all? My name's Holly Williams, and I had the pleasure and honor of serving with Vic on the board for nearly 10 years in the 2000s. I've got a lot of great memories, many of about our service together, many of which have been alluded to earlier. I wasn't going to talk about any of them except since Representative Harris is here. I will have to talk about the time we were in the Evergreen Community Parade. It might have been in Paul's Mustang or something like that, and Vic and I are in the back throwing out candy. And, you know, we basically worked our tails off that that year to get that bond passed. And it was the first time the district had passed a bond in, I don't really know, I think it might have been 20, 30 years. I mean, we desperately needed the schools, and it was it was a really great effort and a great day when it passed. So that's just one I had to share. But anyhow, one of the things, it's been alluded to before, but Vic has always been about kids. In every discussion, she always wanted to know what's best for our kids. Putting students first is what Victoria is all about as a person and a school director. And I think that's what we'd want from every school director. But really, Vic, you absolutely have epitomized it. I could say so much more, but I won't. Thank you so much for your excellent service to the students of our community. We are also very fortunate.
I do have to say, I'm sorry I'm breaking the rules, but I do have to say, Holly taught me the benefits of a good scattergram. And I will always thank her for that.
All right, thank you, Holly. Next up is Rona Sanhaas. Hi, Rona.
Good evening. First of all, these are new digs. I haven't seen, we used to be in the trailers. So how long have you been in this new?
No, not that long. Two.
Two years?
Two years.
Two and a half, so it'll be three in a row. So I also remember the first time I met Victoria in the very old, rundown Millplain Elementary School, which our kids went to. And you were in the back of the auditorium in our very small PTO organization, which Skylar was running. I think we had like 10 people there or something, but you were in the back, and that's how I first met you. And then I picked up a campaign sign for Joan Skelton. That's how we met.
Yep.
Fast forward, as a former Clark College board member, we also served together when you were in the early 90s, I think, or maybe early 2000s. I can't remember the decades. But for 10 years, I was a former, I was, I served on the Clark College Board, and you were not only an advocate for the K through 12, but you're an advocate for higher education, technical, and community colleges. And so we met at that time, like four times a year as board members, and I hope you continue that. And to the current board members, I know you're going to do a great job, but I know you're going to miss Victoria's legendary vision and her commitment to the kids. But I expect, I expect that you will carry on for her and do everything that you can for our students. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, Rona.
And we have, and spend more time with your grandkids now.
I know. Now Tuesdays are for happy hours. I can go too finally.
All right, next to speak this evening is Shelley Morell. Did I say that last name right?
Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt the celebration, but I'm here for a message. Good evening, my name is Shelley Morell. I'm the music teacher at York Elementary. And on behalf, I'm here on behalf of all elementary instructional coaches and specialists. So we're talking PE teachers, music teachers, and librarians, and instructional coaches across our 22 buildings. We've been told that we do not have a substitute teacher shortage in our district, yet we, as a cohort, have stepped into the general education to cover unfilled positions on a rotating basis for the past several years, resulting in students missing in their guaranteed viable library, music, and PE instruction and curriculum. Since our board meeting on October 10th, this is the data collected from the cohort who has been treated like a substitute. Because there have been no substitutes, there have been 15 unfilled absences requiring coverage, resulting in 75 specialist sections of 30 minutes each being canceled. Students missed out on the following instructional minutes in our specialized subject areas: 390 minutes in library, 1,170 minutes in music, 570 minutes in PE, and instructional coaches lost 120 minutes of student contact time. That is a total of 2,250 minutes of lost instructional time from the students that has happened just since October 10th. In addition, it has cost the district a lot of money. For a full day of coverage in certificated positions, it has cost the district $1,013. For a half-day coverage of certificated positions, $443. Compensation for loss of planning, $5,625. The cost of covering unfilled teacher absences since October 10th has resulted in a $7,081 price. The total cost of covering since September 11th is $12,629. Here are some comments from teachers who have not been able to teach. "I now have missed my Friday classes for three weeks and will only see them one month, once this entire month. The practice for the Veterans Day Assembly next week was missed, and this was the last chance for our rehearsal. Fitness testing was missed, teamwork activities were missed. Libraries only offered to students once a week. This meant that two of my classes I have seen once. They have missed their digital citizenship for fourth grade, and the first grade class has missed for two straight months. Please hear that this is a true and valid concern and take the steps necessary to attract and retain substitutes, but mostly, please find a way to cover classes that does not result in taking away the education that is supposedly guaranteed to our students." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up to speak is Gary Wilson. There he is. Hi, Gary.
Hi, thank you. This will be my last public comment addressed to this board as a public citizen for the foreseeable future. I've addressed this board for over two years, and one glaring problem has been a lack of transparency. My opponent this last election has several times denied that to this board. That is not transparent, but Rob Perkins, you've been on the board for nine years publicly in a candidate forum two months ago, stated the first thing out of his mouth that evening that this board is not transparent. He went on to say he brings it up to this board every month privately.
I don't remember saying that.
I have 12 people who can testify to that, and I can get you.
I remember saying the district is transparent. It needs more transparency.
Okay. I'm glad, Rob. I'm going to be pushing this board for more transparency going forward, so I'd appreciate if you'd be a man of your word with that. We talked just this last Saturday, and anyway, I'll continue on, forget that part. I'm going to challenge everyone here. We have to work together, but the people that voted me in to be a voice for change, and as God is my judge, and he is, I'm going to be. I'll be at the Wazda Training this week with a few of you. I took the Wazda online training in June, and at one point in that training, I was told you have to be a team player. And I wrote in the chat that I was not going to be going along with a lot of what this board has been approving. I can pretty much guarantee that, you know, the days of this board always voting unanimously in the future are probably over. Not all the time, of course, but, you know. Honestly, I don't remember a vote going back two years to December 16, 2021. That was the last time I remember a vote not going unanimously. And when four of you voted to fire Mike Merlino without cause, note, Jacqueline, you were not on the board at that time, paying him $269,000 for admitting you made a mistake. And one, Rachel Rogers, voted to fire him with cause, and not surprisingly, Rachel resigned two weeks later. I don't plan on resigning. I worked too hard to get here. I have the Washington School Board Standards, five core principles. I love them. One, responsible school district governance. Two, communication of and commitment to high expectations for student learning. Three, creating conditions district-wide for student and staff success. Four, holding the district accountable for student learning. I've asterisked that one. And five, engagement of the community in education. These will be my focus. I'm sure I'll make some mistakes, but I'll learn from them. Going forward, let's agree to reduce admin with the 2024-25 budget and funnel those savings down to paraeducators, increasing their pay to attract and keep them and hire more. So in three years, if there is another strike, it will only be about the money and not about safety and more classroom support. Also, let's better protect our students from both dangers within their student body and from outside. And definitely, let's raise our academics so students, teachers, parents, and grandparents can be proud of the Evergreen School District and voters can want to vote and approve our levies. Change is good. Thank you. And Allie, once I'm in, I'd like to visit your class. It's very concerning what you've said, and I've heard it over and over during this campaign, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, next up to speak is Phil Cronebush. Hi, Phil.
Good evening. Thank you, board. I'd like to start out by saying, after a interview with The Columbian that Victoria and Gary attended, we left the offices there at The Columbian, and I broke off with Victoria and had a wonderful discussion. And I realized how compassion, how much compassion she had. And I want to share some things, what I learned from her that that day, because it's wonderful to see somebody else's fresh perspective. Basically, to seek common ground with whatever you do, because that's really the only thing that you can make progress forward with. She also told me so much that I believed in, also that the parents need to be involved. And we can see, Gary and I can understand that the parents are not involved enough. They don't come to enough to the board meetings and things like that. We're going to try to work on that. We've been, we know it's a difficult problem, and we understand that Victoria tried so much to do that, and she believed in that. I also believe that compassion is the rule, not an exception, that transparency to the public is absolutely necessary, and we need to do a better job of that. I want to say thank you for staying involved and going forward. I know you will. I was going to read a piece, I know that some people know, from the prophet Khalil Gabbal, the last his ending piece where he leaves the town. And I think that is really what's going to happen here. I hope you're even possibly on our team, because I believe involving people who are critical and have a different view is important to get the right decision. And I think that's a fair thing to do. I want to say thank you to the board members for helping Gary transition and to feel like he belongs. I know he's going to give 100% for the children of Evergreen School District, or I'm going to beat him. I know it would consider the will of the stakeholders of the Evergreen School District. I know Gary will listen and carefully make decisions with compassion. I remind him that, for him to follow Victoria's example. Thank you for your Thank you for your service. I appreciate everything you did. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. All right. Morgan Vell.
Hello, board and superintendent. Thank you for the chance to speak today. I am the other daughter of Victoria. So my mom has been passionate about education for my entire life. My memories of school and my mom are entwined because she was always there at my school, either volunteering in a classroom or going from a PTA meeting to a shared leadership team meeting. I remember many evenings staying late at school so my mom could attend a PTA meeting. My sister and I would sit outside of her meetings and do our homework. We quickly became known as Victoria Bradford's daughters among the staff, teachers, and students of Harmony Elementary. It made us feel so proud that our mom was always there. We knew she took our education seriously and wanted to make sure that all students were receiving the right education for them, that individual needs were being met. My mom understands what it feels like to be a parent who needs to advocate for her children. She was doing this for me even before she joined the board. When I was six, I developed hearing loss, and my mom set to work to advocate for me to make sure that the loss would never impact my education and that I would never feel different or singled out due to my hearing loss. She worked alongside my teachers and pathologists to bring microphones into my classroom so I could always hear what the teachers were saying. Indeed, she has such a close relationship with my teachers that I saw many of them as extensions of my own family. I was excited to go to school and learn. I was proud of my mom when she decided it was time to run for school board. She spent many years building up relationships with teachers and administrators, dragging my sister and I to board meetings, and making sure she understood the issues that faced the Evergreen School District, the teachers, and most importantly, the students. So many of the conversations around our dinner table focused on the work of the board, and when our friends were over for dinner too, she would listen and ask questions, always eager to find out what was going on with the students, what they needed, and what the board could do to help. She has always been an advocate for students and ensuring their needs are met. There are so many things that my mom has pushed forward during her time on the board. Others who have spoken before may have outlined just some of those things. I also know that many of the decisions the board has made weren't easy or always understood, but I do know that the best interests of the students have always been at the center of every decision that has come from my mom and the board. My family has a legacy of putting education as a priority. It's why I decided to go into the education field myself and why I have a master's in education. I attribute this to my mom's years of service on the board, the lessons that she taught me, and respecting my teachers, and in turn, my teachers devoting their time to my education. I am proud of you, Mom. You have done amazing work, and there are thousands of students who have graduated from the Evergreen School District, who have benefited from your work and the work of the school board. Congratulations on an amazing 24 years on the Evergreen School Board. I love you, Mom.
Thanks, honey. And now, and now, because Morgan is a substitute teacher and could never work in our district, she needs to apply here, because obviously, we need you.
All right. Our last speaker that signed up this evening is Jenny Verteska.
Hi. Hello, school board and superintendent. My name is Jenny Verteska, and I have two students in the district. I'm here to share my frustrations regarding the highly capable cluster model. I've reached out to the district twice for assistance in understanding what to expect in the new cluster model. I emailed my questions in July and again in August, and included multiple district employees in both emails. I never received any response from any person on either of these emails. Also, at the school board meeting on August 8th, a community member asked about the highly capable budget increase, and the bud, excuse me, the board said that she would be given additional explanation of how the money is being used. I also spoke at that meeting, and I asked to be given the same information. I have not yet received that. I'm simply trying to get information so that I can manage my expectations for this school year, so I will ask the questions here. Will the high-cap students be sitting together in the classroom? Will the high-cap students from other classes in that grade at the same school partner up at any time? Will the high-cap students be given the opportunity to pursue passion projects like they did in the former part-time Excel program? Will the additional core resources be just additional worksheets given to the high-cap students? And what do you mean by job-embedded support? I asked my daughter's teachers these questions and was told the students do not sit together, they do not partner with other classes, and there are no passion projects. I am not faulting the teacher for any of this. It is the district's lack of leadership and communication that has left teachers and parents with no clear direction on how to serve the students you have identified as highly capable. Your website says that in the cluster grouping service model, students will be clustered together in one or more classrooms, enabling access to both their intellectual peers and their grade-level peers for all of their social and learning activities. My child has five high-cap students in her classroom, and they do not sit together. There are multiple classes of the same grade at my child's school that have other high-cap students, and they do not work together. There is a 4th, 5th grade class at my daughter's school that has high-cap students whom my daughter attended part-time Excel with last year that she does not even get to see now because they follow the 5th grade schedule. These high-cap students are far from being clustered. They are not being given access to their high-cap peers for their social and learning activities. This is having an impact on my child's self-esteem. The one thing that made her feel like she belonged was being with students who were like her. Now she is isolated from her peers, is losing her spark and passion for learning, and trying to fit in through clowning around in class. Finally, I have heard from many parents that received the recent email about the upcoming highly capable testing, that they think it is a waste of time because there is no benefit for the students now. Please communicate with the public and your staff about the highly capable program and how the cluster model should be implemented so we can make sure our students do not lose their love of learning or positive self-image. Thank you, or, excuse me. Think about your strategic plan, tagline, belonging for each, success for all, and ask yourselves if you are including the highly capable population in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. All right. That concludes our public comment. We will go ahead and move on to the board consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move we approve the board's consent agenda as presented.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to the superintendent consent agenda, the same drill, motion for approval.
I move for approval of the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Second. I think Rob got the second. Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We'll move on to a presentation. This is the 2022-2023 year-end report. I believe Jennifer Jacobson is going to come up and give us that report. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening to the board of directors and to Superintendent Boyd. Let's hope my technology works. It was, I was having trouble earlier, so. So tonight, I've got two presentations for you. The first one is presenting the 2223 financial statements to you. So this is something we do annually around November, December, and I will keep it kind of at a high level, but please feel free to ask any questions. And then the second part of this is a short presentation on where we are at as far as 2324, kind of our status now that we're got enrollment in, and we have some more information and how we're going to move forward. So I'll start off with 2223. As you know, we always start with the enrollment. I always talk about how this drives about 90% of our funding is based on the number of students we serve. You can see this troubling trend we've got. We were at a high of 26,482 students we served back in '16 and '17, and we ended last year with an average of 22,864. So that's about a 3,600 student drop in the last seven years. I'll go into more detail kind of on projections related to enrollment in the next presentation. How did we do against our budget for last year? We budgeted for 22,745, and we came in a little bit higher at 22,863, and that's a great place to be. We generated a little bit more funding that helped hire a couple teachers to dress the additional students and battle some of our inflationary battles that we've had. But overall, we've seen about 1,500 have been the last few years of incoming kindergarten, Overall, and I'll get into more detail on revenues and expenditures, but here's just a three-year historical look at the district. We are, we've maintained about a $28 million ending fund balance. If you remember, we had to cut about $20 million coming into 2223, and even with those cuts, we still spent about $10 million more. So inflation and salary and labor costs continue to increase. We did spend down about $400,000 of that fund balance, but those were all from restricted funds, and I'll go into that in the next. So our fund balance of 28 million is made up of various components. We have a number of areas where we receive restricted funds. So CTE, LAP, Skill Center, and Food Services are all funds we pull into the district and have to spend on those particular areas, and those funds that we don't spend end up in a designated spot. So you can see, we did spend down some of our restrictions for CTE. We were building up the new Skill Trade Center with those funds. And then the unrestricted pots of money, those two together, we have a board policy that we need to have 5% of the previous year's expenditures. So that is our policy. And you can see, we ended the year with 5.03%, so we were able to maintain that 5%, which was our goal. Breakdown of revenues, just to give you a general idea, we have almost $410 million in revenues received last year. The bulk of that comes through our state basic ed apportionment. So those are funds that, you know, are used to pay our classroom teachers, principals, and a lot of our different positions in the district. State special purpose and federal special purpose are designated specifically for certain programs like LAP and bilingual and Title I. And then I pulled federal ESAR funds out, so you could see really how much of the pie the federal ESAR funds make up. It's about 5% of our total revenue, which is roughly $20 million, were from those extra federal ESAR funds that we received to help us get through the pandemic. And then our local miscellaneous revenues are levy collections. I show you a three-year summary, and really, what I wanted to point out here is you can see those federal ESAR and stabilization funds on the far end. In 2122, about 10% of our revenue came from a combination of these federal ESAR funds, which are one-time funds, they expire after 2324, and some additional stabilization funds that the state allocated to us. And this was to help us get through the enrollment decline and the pandemic and all of the things we were battling at that time coming out of the pandemic. That then dropped this last year to just 5%, and so that you can kind of understand where we had to cut 20 million, which is 5% of our budget to, because of those fallen resources. As far as where the money goes, here I have got a breakdown, about 62.4% in certificated salary and benefits and 22.4% in classified salary and benefits. So when you look at those two together, we pay over 85, well, about 85% just directly to staff. And then I want to also point out, our total purchased services are about 11% of the total budget, but over 4.5% of that goes to our custodial service contract and our food service contract, which is primarily staff. So if you're looking at, you know, a Vancouver who they employ at food services and custodial services all in-house, you see things, you know, look a little bit different. If you take that 4.6% and add it to the other staffing costs, now we're getting up to close to 90% of every dollar is spent on our staffing. Oops. This is another way, OSPI has this information out on their website, another way to break down that expenditure data, that we spend 72.7% on teaching and teaching support. School administration, our principal, principals' offices, so the, all the classified that work there, come to about 7.2%. Our central administration is 5.6. And then other support activities include things like transportation, food services, utilities, and insurance. That's 14.5%. OSPI does have a report where they compare us with 12 similar districts, similar-sized districts, and we are very similar in all of those areas to what percentages we allocate This is my last slide for the 2223 report, summary of our other funds. So we do have four other funds aside from the general fund. General fund takes care of most of the operations. Capital projects is, are where our bond funds and impact fees and some of those other types of funds are collected, and that's where we pay for all of the new buildings and all of our building upgrades and modernizations. So we ended the year with about $76 million in our capital projects fund. Our debt service fund is just to service those bonds, so any bond principal and interest payments run through the debt service fund. ASB fund, you know, is students, the student fund for, they raise funds for extracurricular, for athletics. They raised about $100,000 more in that fund. They're doing a great job. And then the transportation vehicle fund is primarily, or only, for purchasing buses for, to, and from transportation for schools. So we've got about $8 million in there. So do you have any questions about 2223 before I move on to kind of our current status?
One of our revenue sources is the tech levy.
Yes.
Which fund is that deposited into?
So it is deposited into the capital projects fund, and then it's transferred out to reimburse in the general fund, because we use it for hardware techs and leases and all kinds of technology-related expenses. So when you see that $11 million transfer out, about 10 of that is going into the general fund to reimburse for those expenses.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to the next one. Of course, I had to use two different, I used a PowerPoint and then a Google Sheets for my, let's see. Is this not, this isn't showing up, though? So I've prepared a 2324 financial status update. So it's early in the year. There's only been a couple of months gone by, but I think it's time we start talking about what the current year looks like and what the future year looks like, so. I want to start off with saying that the financial issues we're facing as a district is, are not specific to Evergreen. We're seeing them across the state and across the country. We are seeing declining enrollment in public education all over the country, but specifically, the larger urban and suburban districts are seeing a real hit to enrollment, so that's a huge revenue source we're faced with. The COVID-19 rescue funds are expiring after 2324, so that is part of that eser cliff that they talk about. We also, of course, have all the inflation, and everyone feels that. That's been very challenging. And then last, is we really haven't had adequate state funding keeping up with our costs. So this, these are a couple articles. This one, the second one, Why Schools Across Washington State Are Slashing Their Budgets. They explain these in much more detail, and it's a very great article to read. As far as the state funding, I would like to point out that as a percentage of K-12 funding and state, in the funding and state, in the state operating budget, in the previous two bienniums, about 51% of our total operating budget came to K-12 schools. Now in the last two bienniums, it has dropped down to 43 and 44%. So our costs have continued to raise and raise and we have not received funding to, to match those raising costs. Special Ed, they did get a little bit of extra funding last year, but our teacher salaries are, you know, MSOCs. There are a lot of areas that are sorely underfunded. So I'm going to go on to the next slide, which is the EPS legislative priorities. These are still kind of draft. This is something you all know, the board gets together, they speak with superintendent, myself, we talk to other districts in the region. We, you know, use our resources like WASBA and WASDA to elevate these priorities to the legislature. Here are a number of priorities. I'm going to point out just a couple. One is special education. So when we got the books closed last month, found that we had a $14 million shortfall in special education. So that, you know, we receive about 40, 42 million in levy funds and 14 million right there is automatically goes into, to the special education. Another one I wanted to point out is MSOCs, which are material supplies and operating costs. We're given a small sum of money to fund non-employee related costs as well. And those were only increased by 3.1% this year, which resulted in only about a $300,000 increase for us to cover all of our increases across materials and supplies. And we got our insurance bill in the fall and it increased by over 700,000. So just that one bill alone was twice as much as the increase we're receiving from the state. It was a 21% increase. So that, that's, that insurance is for property and vehicle insurance. Typically, it was around two and a half to three million for several years. Now it's up over 4 million for the current year. I think we've heard about substitute costs and parent educator funding and shortage are huge issues for the district. Substitute costs especially, we haven't seen an increase in the rate or, or amount in over 10 years. And so that's one we're elevating as well. There are also unfunded mandates related to that. So let's get down to Evergreen and what we're seeing so far for the 23, 24 school year. So this is the enrollment. We put out a pretty conservative budget, assuming we would drop a couple of hundred more students. So our total we came up with was 22,570 and our October 1st count was 22,426. So that's an overall deficit of 143 students. I think you, you can see here, our kindergarten came in particularly low and that is very troubling. When we are getting into these very low class sizes, it's going to follow through the grades and the progression of our district for years. We used to see 16, 1700 come in in kindergarten and it has dropped significantly. I have, actually, my next slide is, this is a pretty good slide to represent what's been happening over the last few years with regards to enrollment. The blue represents our K-5 elementary, the green our middle school and the gray our high school. And from 16, 17, we had 11,639 students in our elementary and now in 23, 24, we only have 91,17. That's a 2,500 student drop in seven years. It's, it's very significant. And as those class sizes of 1,400 keep rolling through, it's going to keep impacting out into the future grade bands. So when you look at our overall enrollment of 26, 482 at the high in 16, 17 compared to this current 23, 24, that's a loss of 4,055 FTE. And we receive a little over $10,000 in basic ed funding for each of those FTE. I have up in the top corner, that equates to about $41 million in revenue this year that we aren't receiving if we had been able to maintain those, those numbers. So I, we are just partway through November, so I have to make a lot of assumptions when I'm rolling out and projecting for the current year. But from when we put the budget back together in the spring, a lot of changes happen. We have increased labor costs over and above our budget of $1.8 million for this current year. Our enrollment decline ends up being about a $1.5 million hit as well. And then that unanticipated insurance increase, we only budgeted for a $200,000 increase and not a 700,000. So this is over and above what we budgeted. We were fortunate that we have some additional ESER funds available from last year that we had budgeted to spend out last year and we did not. For instance, summer school, we had put a pretty big ESER fund budget aside. We didn't use, I think we used about half of what we set aside. So we were fortunate, we were able to carry those funds over this year and that will help offset some of those increased costs. But what that means is we still have about a $2.5 million impact on our ending fund balance for the current year. Just to see what that looks like, our original 23, 24 budget, we projected to end with 28 million, which would keep us at that 5% that's in the board policy. If things continue as they are and we do have that deficit, then we will end with a 4.4% unrestricted fund balance at the end of the year. So we have made some changes this year. We've frozen out-of-state travel. We've had a couple of positions we haven't filled. We're trying to tighten our belts the best we can because we don't want to see this deficit. So here's a reminder of the reductions we've been through for the last two years. In 22, 23, it was about 20 million in reductions. We were able in 21, 22, saw all those ESER funds to keep a lot of our staff in place. But in 22, 23, we knew the ESER funds would go away and we need to make some reductions. We right-sized a lot of our classrooms at that time. And then in 23, 24, we had to make another 19 million in reductions. This we tried to spread across classified, certificated and administrators. And we also looked at, under every rock, as far as our MSOCs went, custodial services, building budgets, travel, all of it. And we found another $3 million in reductions to make. So as far as then trying to project out what next year's reductions are going to look like, I had to take a lot of assumptions into account. There are things in the 23, 24 school year, we still don't know, things like transportation funding doesn't, they're still collecting the ridership data, so we won't even find out those funds until February. Similar with our levy equalization funding, until assessed values have been determined, we can't really count on exactly what those will look like. So I had to make some assumptions in this projection, but we know ESER funds will be going away after 23, 24. We know there will be a salary gap because of our CBAs. We know of this enrollment decline when we have a senior class of 2,100 leaving and an incoming class of 13,50. We're going to, we're going to see a, a large enrollment decline each year. We do have an increase in our property tax collection and some additional self-funding coming through the, the state. And then we need to build that fund balance back to 5%. And so our estimated reductions right now in November are between 16 and 20 million for next year. My last slide, budget reduction engagement plans. So we are starting to talk about what this is going to look like, what our next steps are going to be. We're going to have a workshop after this where we can have more discussions about what stakeholder engagement looks like. We have identified our collaboration partners. We've put together the Evergreen Community Advisory Team, which was, we had one meeting and it was great. We have our Student Advisory Council and other leadership and union partners we can work with. And we've been thinking about how we're going to get information distributed out and collected from community and other staff. So. Are there any questions?
Well, I know that you mentioned we're going to talk about it in workshop, but is there any questions on the presentation at this point? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Oh, don't go too far because I think you're up next, right?
Yeah. So this next resolution is when Mark Pressing had spoke with us a couple of board meetings ago and it's, it's just a recertification of what our debt service collections will be like for next year. We usually certify that through the budget, but since we're in the middle of a bond issue, those numbers changed a little bit, so we have to go through a recertification. It didn't change much. I think it was less than 2%, but it's, it's just a resolution to certify the amount of bond levy collections for next year. Do you have any questions? No.
Any questions? Then we will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution number 6852, the recertification of the 2024 debt service fund excess property taxes as presented.
Second from Victoria. All right. It's been moved in seconded. Yeah. Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Next up is the superintendent report. Superintendent Boyd?
Nothing to add in the spirit of time.
Thank you. All right. Department update. We're going to get a teaching and learning and equity update. I think we're going to call up Dr. Armstrong.
Good evening, Board Chair, Directors, Student Advisors and Superintendent Boyd. I am excited to be before you with the first teaching, learning and equity report since I've taken position as Deputy Superintendent. I am excited to build upon the work that has been happening across the teaching, learning and equity department. And so you'll have the opportunity to hear from Director Singleton as she speaks about her department, diversity and inclusion that rests within the TLE. And so for the sake of time, I will bring her forward and we'll be available for any questions that you have. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm actually going to have Shane go first. Hi, everyone. Good evening. We're going to actually tag team this today and talk about safety and belonging. And so Shane's going to start us off by talking about safety with an incident update and then I'll come over and talk about some of our other work.
Well, good evening, Board, Superintendent, students. So I have about 10 minutes to cover something that we could talk about all day. So we're going to do it from very high level and try not to activate our green button. Sorry about that. So just for signposting, we're going to just do a quick debrief of the incident that occurred on October 19th at Evergreen High School. Talk about the after-action review we did and then cover some of the lessons learned. And then it'll segue into Jamila's part where we talk about our safety and security. So the things that we do in our department, safety and security and working together with Jamila's department are all part of our operational expectations, 10 are safe, supportive learning environment, which you're all familiar with and put in there. So we're going to start, this is an overview of where Evergreen High School is for orientation purposes. To the north is 28th Street and to the west is 138th Avenue and 18th Street, of course, to the south. In, in this area, this is our largest property. And you can see in, within a mile, we have Evergreen High School Cascade, we have our warehouse, McKenzie Stadium, our transportation, our sports annex and Burton and Home Choice. If we looked equal distance from Home Choice Academy to the south, we would have Hearthwood and the building that we're in as well as transitioned Hollingsworth Academy and Legacy. So it's very central to what we're doing. But specifically, we're going to talk about this area and the star is where the weapon was discharged. And we'll see that, but you can see how it's central to all of these places that we have students, staff and should mention that these buildings right out here are in use also by EOCF. So, all right. So focusing in on that area, just after 1:00 on October 19th, a fight broke out in the courtyard of Evergreen High School. And watching the cameras, it lasted 42 seconds before an adult intervened and started to break up the fight. When the fight began being broke up, two of the people that were involved in the fight took off and a third followed them and they took this path. We had at least two of our campus security officers that were right behind them the entire way, following them, trying to engage them. And this isn't uncommon. Students involved in physical altercation, they blow up. And then our campus security are trying to reengage them, to get them to deescalate, to calm down, to come back, to talk to them. So this scenario has played out countless times over many of our properties. However, once the students reached the area with the crosswalk right up here, the two either being tired of being followed by the one or I don't know what. And I should mention, as you're aware, that this is a law enforcement investigation and a criminal matter, so we're not going into a ton of details, just the high-level overview. The two students appeared to turn to face the one and then the one pulled a gun out. And then the two began to run back the way they had came, which is the direction of our campus security officers. And then the student appeared to discharge his weapon in that direction four times. So the timeline, the first shot was fired at 1:07 PM and 42 seconds. And then because we have a lockdown button in Evergreen High School and we have software, we can see what time that button was pushed. It was pushed less than a minute later. And then it being pushed automatically puts the neighboring school Cascade into a secure. When that lockdowns button pushed, voices heard overhead that says we're in a lockdown situation. And then simultaneously at Cascade, they were being put in a secure just because Evergreen's triggered. At 1:10, the secretary at Evergreen called 911. And we have a system where when 911 is called from any phone in our district, in my office, where our coordinator of safety and security operates like an operations center every day, we have an emergency number in the district that people will call anytime, police or an ambulance or they're going to do a drill or whatever. Anyways, it rings in our office and she listened to it in real time. So at the same time that the 911 operators were learning about this, we were learning about this. And we have a system to notify our superintendent leadership team that we use Google Chat. She opened a Google Chat and started that. Meanwhile, the pushing of the lockdown button also as a duplication and to make sure notifies our alarm company, who then called the 911 center and notified them that the panic button had been pushed at Evergreen. So at 1:19, according to the video, the suspect who, after discharging the weapon, ended up throwing the weapon into the bushes. And the benefit of it happening in an area that had so many yellow boxes up there is that we have cameras on a lot of those places and we're able to stitch a lot of the activities together by looking at the cameras from different buildings, which helped law enforcement figure a lot of that out. But by 1:19, the suspect was taken into custody. And all these situations are super dynamic. So like at 1:41, 911 did a reverse call. And then we see at 3:50, the students were released by law enforcement at Evergreen. And then at 3:51, the lockdown was lifted. At 4:10, Cascade released its students. And then at 5:30, we were done here doing our reunification. But there's a lot of other stuff that was happening during that time. This is a list of all the sites again that were affected by this and the organizations, the outside organizations. So So, I talked to CRESSA. There were more than 46 different police units that responded to this. Those units come from VPD, Clark County Sheriff's Office, Washington State Patrol, Camas Police Department, Washougal Police Department, Battleground Police Department. And additionally, I was notified that Vancouver Fire and AMR both had staged in the area because we weren't sure initially when the call came out exactly what had happened. The more agencies and locations and organizations that are involved, it compounds the complexity of the response. It's impossible to synchronize messaging, and everybody's trying to notify their community. Cascade was sent out a message to its community. And then, we, at district office, were trying to send messaging out to our community. Evergreen's trying to send it out. VPD's doing press releases, everybody. The media's trying to get a story. Social media's putting out, and I created this little graph that just basically shows that there's very little information right when it first begins, but the longer the time goes on, the more information is gathered and known. But people are trying to get information out first, and we also were trying to get as accurate of information out as we could as time went on. We did an after-action review in this space a week or so after. We invited all those people, and we had a great showing. We invited a facilitator from CRESSA, the emergency manager of Clark County, came and facilitated the event so we could all participate as equals. VPD sent two lieutenants, a sergeant, and an assistant chief. CRESSA sent their manager from their 911 center, and from the other side of the house, the emergency manager. EOCF sent their CEO and three managers. We had principals from all the schools involved. Superintendent, deputy superintendent, senior leadership team, we had two of you board members that were there. And then, we also invited, because I'd been called and asked by my counterpart at Vancouver Public Schools, hey, what did you learn from that? What happened? And I said, why don't you come to the after-action review and find out? And likewise, with EST 112, with our school safety, public health coordinator that we do work with there, invited her to participate as well. What did we learn? We learned a lot. And as conversations continue, more things, like as we get deeper into the weeds, but from the high-level lessons that we learned, for communication, the sustain, the wins were that the lockdown button automatically put Cascade into a protective posture without having to call them on the phone or try to give them anything. It was just an automatic. That when Evergreen High School called 911, it rang our phone so that we could listen into the call and learn simultaneously. And that we have this program that we use with the superintendent leadership team called Google Chat, that then pushes notification out to all the members of the superintendent leadership team, and we're all able to coordinate and set up our emergency operations center. What can we improve with our communication? Well, we have other partners that I mentioned, like EOCF, for example, that didn't receive some of the initial notifications. So, we did notify them. I think our first phone call to them was at 1:31. When we got a hold, at 1:17, I notified my supervisor, who tried to call one of the people, but there wasn't an answer on the other end of the phone. So, we weren't able to share the information with them, but we did try to make that call. But with EOCF here at the after-action review, we've actually added their people to our Easy Alert system. So, anytime we have at any of our sites where we have Easy Alert incident, they will be notified now. So, our EOC came together organically, and it was all hands-on deck, but we learned that we need to formalize it a little bit more, assign roles, and make sure everybody knows who's doing what role. Because we had a lot of problem solvers, and some of our problem solvers were solving problems that other problem solvers were already solving. So, just to make us more efficient, we're going to really formalize the beginning of our emergency operations center and have a whiteboard prepared with who's filling what role. And then we have sheets for here, your this role, these are your responsibilities. And then, we were not co-located with law enforcement. We actually didn't know where the law enforcement incident command was. We had an idea that where it was, but we sent another resource to the school so that we had somebody at the school to support them. But we didn't have live... Eventually, law enforcement came to be with us, but it wasn't the decision-maker. So, next time, we will seek out and be co-located with law enforcement. Sharing of information is another high-level... By vacation planning, we had one of our directors that was on vacation, and his assistant director didn't miss a beat through this whole thing. Like, he was calling me, what can I do? And it turned out that was our maintenance, that they played a huge role with VPD in cutting down all these bushes for their evidence search. So, and they did that without missing a beat. He also worked to coordinate with EOCF. That's Teddy Denke, our assistant director of maintenance, because Marty was off on vacation. But that's just a hat tip to leaders training up their subordinates, because you never know what's going to happen when you're away. Easy Alert worked well, regular PA announcements, efforts to get the message out to parents as quickly as possible is, again, a sustain. And we had uploaded our floor plans and contact information into a system called Rave Facilities that CRESSA has. However, we had not uploaded our reunification plans, which is on the improved side, number three over there. Also, proficiency with Easy Alert, not every single staff member had been able to log in or work that out. And regular PA announcements didn't happen at both sites. So, that's part of our improve. We have somebody at the EOC, that'll be their job to make sure to remind the schools, put out... And the benefit of putting a regular PA announcement is that people outside the building hear that message as well. And even though we don't want parents showing up at a crime scene like this, if they are, at least then they're getting that information. And then, our sites didn't have law enforcement liaisons specifically at them, working with the leadership. And we're going to advocate better for that next time. They were at our sites, but they were doing the criminal investigation. And finally, coordination. I'm going to start with the improved because I want to end on a positive note, that we didn't have a solid recovery plan to include the psychological effects of something like this, and what we were going to do to take care of our folks. So, even today, we had a meeting with our folks, and we'd begun putting that together. So, if something like this happens again, we'll be able to come in and signpost and say, here's what we can expect over the next couple of days, so that everybody has an idea who will be there to help and what the plan looks like. And we've even taken into account that it might be two weeks before somebody is ready to do that day one bit of processing, and then at the year anniversary mark, that may be a trigger too. So, our plan is going to take all those things into account. But our sustain is that our staff did an amazing job. Our campus security was where they were supposed to be. People used their radios, they communicated. And here at AST, we were able to pull off a reunification, even though we hadn't discussed that before. And then, through that, we have great conversations with our first responders and continue to work with them. So, with that, we're going to turn it over to Jamila.
Can you explain the Easy Alert system to me? Just what it is and how it's supposed to work?
So, the Easy Alert system used to be provided by the Washington State Legislature, but a couple of years, two years ago, they quit paying for it. They used to pay for it statewide. We continue, now we pay for it. But basically, what it is, is it's an app-based system where everybody in the school can join over their email, or there is an app available if they choose to use their phone, where they get notified. And the benefit of using the phone is the information goes with you where you go. Where in most of these situations, if it's just on a computer, and then they leave their computer, we can't give an update that the suspect was last seen going a certain direction. And it even has a feature where they can log their location, like this is where I'm at right now, and it'll triangulate where they're at and show it on a map. So, and we can share documents through that. You can assign tasks through it, but it's a way to push out. And at the end of the event, then you can print out a PDF of the entire conversation and who was there. So, but it allows us to add partners from Chartwells or ABM also, so they're part of the conversation.
In the event the internet is not available, is there a fallback for communication?
Well, yes. We had a meeting about that today, too. It was a busy day for meetings. But we have our red phones, our plain-old telephone system, POTS phones. So, if the internet was down, we could still communicate with those phones. We have district emergency radios. And then this Easy Alert system is cellular as well. It operates over the phones. So, we can jump in their conversation and update them on information. They can take pictures and upload those too. Like, if a tornado came through, they could upload pictures of the damage they have, and we'd be able to direct resources based on who needed it the most. But, so the district emergency radios, the POTS telephone system, and Easy Alert if the power's out or the internet's down.
And just to be sure, that was 12 minutes from 911 call to the apprehension of the suspect.
Well, that is hard to follow. So, I'm going to start with just, we'll do a palate cleanse here for a moment. So, one of the things that we talk about is the curb-cut effect. And I don't know if that's something that you all are familiar with, but there's an article out. And the concept, right, is that if, you know, the sidewalks and the streets that we drive on, the curb is cut out. And that's because somebody decided that it would be helpful for people to get access to, you know, people in wheelchairs. But that's ended up helping all of us, right? People who walk. I have a bad knee. It helps me sometimes because I don't have to make the drop off the curb. And I just want to acknowledge, Victoria, because when I heard your daughter talking about her hearing, I've walked around our schools, and I'm noticing in a lot of our schools that we have microphones, and I'm imagining that there was some advocacy done. And in that same way, something that is good for one ends up being good for all. And now, in all of our classrooms, all of our students are having access because of decisions that were made to help students who might have hearing impairments. And so I introduced that curb-cut effect because when I think of equity, that is what we're doing. We're always trying to think about how do we center our students, and how do we center their needs, and really think about ways to support them, and then find ways to increase access for all. And so, in my presentation today, I'm one of five departments in TLE, and so I'm here to do one of the first updates on our strategic plan. And I just want to talk about how we're executing on the district strategy. And then, also just talk about how we might want to measure progress, or things that you might be interested in talking about further. So, first, I will say, we're in an exciting time in our change process. So, our current reality, this is how we think about change in our department. And our previous executive director, Clarissa Hightower, and I came up with this as we looked at some examples from courageous conversations, as they're thinking about transforming districts, and just the phases that it takes to get us to the place where we actually have a school system that is ensuring equitable outcomes. It's not an overnight process, right? And we're right about at year three or four. And things that we're doing in our organization are making sure people are growing in their self-awareness of their racial identity, and that we're also really implementing culturally responsive practices. And what we're hoping to do over the next three years is really build a culture. So, moving away from the individual acts to a culture where we're counteracting inequities, and also having some really clear programs and initiatives that are making sure we're providing cultural responsiveness, that are actually measurably increasing outcomes and access. And so, I also just want to name that in all the work we do, we're thinking about our students who are right now experiencing disproportionality. And I put this chart up here because I think it's important to name that we are in a district now that is majority students of color. And so, we have quite a bit of work to do to think about how we support our students who come from diverse backgrounds. We like to say diversity is a fact, and then inclusion is the act. So, that's the work that we have to do to actually make sure that we don't have that disproportionality. And I don't have the data here because this is a short overview, but we've looked at our academic data, our attendance data, and our behavior data. All shows disproportionality with our students of color, particularly our Pacific Islander and Hispanic Latino students having negative outcomes in all of those areas as compared to other students. And so, as we talk about our strategy, I just will revisit the policy and just kind of restate that we are working towards this policy, but we're doing it in a particular way. And so, just re-grounding in these six areas of having an inclusive curriculum, making sure that we are building courageous conversations and having robust conversations about what our outcomes are looking like and practices that we need to put in place, ensuring access, equitable environments, addressing the predictability of disproportionality. Big words there, right? But just addressing the gaps, and then removing the barriers to do that. And so, goal area one is where our department is really leaning in, and that's around safety and belonging. And we do that in three ways. We're really working to make sure we build capacity, that we grow family engagement, and that we increase and improve the way that we're leveraging student voice. So, obviously, right, we have a strategic plan that has a vision and mission. Our vision for equity and excellence is that as a district, we create an environment and community that is welcomed, included, works, sorry, each person in Evergreen is welcomed, included, and empowered member of our school district as we work together towards success. So, this was our vision that was adopted in the last strategic plan. And then, our mission, and then our core values are on equity, inclusion, and belonging. And so, I want to share with you a couple of things that we are currently doing. But I will say this, just in terms of who we are as a department. And I will say, one of those roles that's unfilled is our executive director role. And so, I've been taking the leadership of the department forward, and this is something that I've created with my team, and really to make sure we hone in on our purpose as a department. And so, we're definitely capacity builders in all that we do. Our team supports professional growth in all the audiences that we work with. We work with certificated, classified, we work with admin, students, and families. And we want to make sure that in the work that we do, we're always trying to and making efforts to be collaborative, even internally with other departments. So, you saw me standing up here with Shane, because we actively are collaborating on figuring out how do we create some Pacific Islander culturally responsive supports for some of our students in the high schools and middle schools. And we also believe that family engagement is critical, that our families, our students are tied to their families, right? And it's important that we honor them, that we honor their culture, that we honor their background. And so, I'm going to share with you a couple of things we're doing around that. But we have our multilingual family liaisons who work in our department, who are constantly striving to pull families in and make sure to leverage them. And then, student voice. We are striving to make sure our BIPOC students, or students with disabilities, or students who identify as LGBTQIA, have a voice in this district. And even though they might, BIPOC students might be the majority, that doesn't mean that they are the majority voice right now. And so, trying to figure out spaces, and one example I'll share with you in a little bit is a group that we've started to make that happen. So, my goals with our team over the next two years are as follows. Like, we know that we're going to be ensuring these outcomes for kids. That's what we're working towards, that each student feels safe in their school, that each student is empowered, and that each student feels culturally accepted. And so, in our work, this is how we're going to be working towards that. And so, I'm running out of time, so I'm going to have to move. But here's a couple of examples and some projects that are happening in those goal kind of focus areas. So, one, as we're working to elevate student voice, we just provided about 60K out to our counselors as they're working to increase their small group supports for their students. And that's from a grant that we had, a federal grant around drug and alcohol prevention. And so, we pushed that out to them so that they could provide the supplies that they needed for those groups. needed for those groups. We also, like I said, are working on building some community-based partnerships with our Pacific Islander students in mind, our Chiqui students. And I'm partnering with VPS and some of the advocates over there to start thinking about how we increase those partnerships. There's a picture there in the center, which I'm excited about. That's a high school community circle. And I think the work that we do is to try and create this innovation where our students have a space and place to have a voice. And so that's one example of a classroom where that's happening. And then in addition to that, I am trying to continue to be out in schools. I'm visiting with principals, trying to learn about their needs, and then working internally in our departments to do some support. So one of those examples is we're working with our transition coaches. You got to meet Lori today from Pacific, who was just acknowledged. And we have amazing coaches across our system. And we're just trying to figure out how do we continue to leverage them so that we can increase some of the ways that our students are engaged. And then the last kind of examples of some projects this year, we did host our centralized summer registration where we, down here in the first floor, you might have seen, it says EPS Welcome Center. And we provided that as a way for families to come in and get registered in person. Skyward is still English only, so we have to find a way to make sure we can get them that translation support. So our bilingual liaisons were available over the summer to do that. And then we also hired in some registrars to help. And then we are also working with VPS and ESD to provide affinity groups for our staff so that we can help our staff get more comfortable around having empathy and confidence in ways to center identity. So those are just a few examples of some projects that I've been working on. And then here's some more things happening on our team, and I'll just give you a second to look through that. I'm really excited to see SAFE get going again, which is Students Advocating for Equity. And Paul Porter, who's one of our transition coaches over at Cascade, is going to be co-leading that for us. And that's groups of students who come from our middle and high schools coming together to think about equity projects to lead in our district. We're also working on absenteeism and trying to reduce withdrawals and maybe have an impact on less students that we're losing in our system. So our team also has some work around that with some departments in the district. And then finally, last but not least, we actually have some folks here from our Equity Advisory Committee. And those are, it's a committee of very important community members, certificated staff, students, and classified staff. And you met and heard about the District Equity PD that we did in August. So that came out of this committee. That was our student group who led that fall PD. And then we have another project that's exciting, which is how do we continue to grow our parent stakeholder group and the diversity in that? So how do we get more parents involved from different backgrounds? And so there's a small cohort of schools that are going to be partnering with the family committee to start to work on how to diversify the PTOs. So just to bring this back, we're continuing to work around capacity building, family engagement, and growing student voice so that we can further our strategic plan around safety and belonging. So any questions?
I know that we're short on time, but you mentioned absenteeism?
Yes.
And I think that maybe that's something we should revisit in sort of a broader way to talk about, trying to retain students and as a metric to, you know, track, some data that we should be tracking.
Yeah. And I was, so part of this next part, and I don't know, do you want to speak to it?
Sure.
The report card.
Yeah. So the work that started a couple of years ago, we're excited to pick that back up. And so there is a little peek at a proposal for Matrix. And we'll be diving in this as a team. And so as you all hear reports from departments on the work that they're elevating as it relates to the strategic plan, you'll see growth in these areas, especially around leading and lagging indicators, right? Knowing that we want to be utilizing indicators that's going to help lead to change and not necessarily resting on the indicators that we get annually and oftentimes too late to make any informed decisions. And so an example of that metrics for belonging, this would be an example of a lagging indicator. We get the results in February. Important information, important data to inform the work. But this is an example of what that looks like. And then just another slide there.
So hopefully, we can continue to have the conversation because I think we would love to be able to keep coming back and sharing progress on how it's having an impact.
And it would be remiss of me not to mention the leadership of Jamila Singleton. Now, I've had the opportunity, and I know you all will get to know me over time, but I've had the opportunity to lead equity in three different states over, I would say, the last seven, eight years. And I will tell you, I had a chance to sit in on some of the meetings that Jamila has led with her team and the thoughtful approach that she's taking around Goal One and Belonging. And I will say that it's top tier, probably some of the best work that I've seen in the last decade, actually. And so I'm really excited to enter in a space where that work is so well thought out and planned. And so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge her and the work that she's been doing and just look forward to bringing more departments in front of you as we anchor in those strategic goal areas.
Thank you, thank you. Any further questions or?
I have a lead for you, Jamila, so don't leave.
Oh, I think you're.
For the PTOs? I will. Thank you. Of course, you're handing, yes. And you're, yes, hand any information that will help. So, well, I appreciate you. I appreciate your support, often in a community where obviously this is an educational space and Goal Area One is so critical. Everything that I just described in terms of the way we build capacity, the way we build culturally responsive practice, it goes alongside Goal Area Two, Three, and Four. And so I'm excited actually to hear the updates with our guaranteed and viable curriculum and instructional practices and the high leverage practices because all of this work is very connected. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Good News Report.
Board Directors, Superintendent Boyd, student representatives. I'm going to skip right kind of to the middle. We've talked a lot about our strategic plan. And going forward, we're going to be showcasing a lot of that work and kind of connecting the good things that are going on in our schools and how it connects to our strategic plan. And I'll start with Burton Elementary School. They had a curriculum night for third and fifth grade students and families where they invited families to come in and kind of not just see what their students are doing, but do the things that their students are doing. So families and students and staff worked together to look at the curriculum and do these education work. And they also got dinner donated from Jimmy John's, so that was great. But this is, of course, one of our strategic plan core values is community and family engagement. So I think that's a great example. Another strategic plan, of course, post diploma work readiness. Mountain View had a wonderful career fair. You could see from the pictures that there was many careers represented, and the students got to connect with a lot of employers and check out some careers. Of course, Veterans Day was Saturday, so we had tons of Veterans Day celebrations at our schools last week and even some yesterday. Endeavor Elementary School, Superintendent Boyd attended this one yesterday. I'll go down to Covington Middle School, had a wonderful Veterans Day assembly. Dr. Armstrong, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Armstrong, was in attendance for this one. So much music, speeches, a lot of different activities. Sullivan Taylor, I was at Sifton, and the Heritage Jazz Band was there, so Sullivan also took part. Ilhia Elementary School had this really cool event. It was a kindergarten alphabet parade, very simple. They got paper bags, they made vests, and they represented a letter. Extra shout out to whatever kid got X, because I know as playing the alphabet game with my kid, X is not easy. So, well done. I hope everyone will take some time to watch this Cascade Middle School video story about their outdoor school experience. They got a grant, almost $100,000, and sixth graders went to the CISPIS Learning Center. And we had 110 Cascade sixth graders attend. 21 Evergreen High School students went as counselors. And this video, we basically did a unique thing. We don't often just give cameras to staff members, but we gave a camera to their associate principal and kind of talked to him about capturing some of this. And he did an amazing job. And this experience from this video, you can see just how valuable it was to them. So it's a little under four minutes, but I think it's well worth everyone's time to watch that wonderful experience. And then finally, some staff and volunteer recognition from Land, Live, and Learn. Every year, they honor one of our staff members and one of our volunteers. You heard Shane mention our Safety and Security Coordinator, and that's Bridget Bodine. And Bridget's the one who does man the, I don't know if man's the right word, but she works the phone for emergency and answers it. So many of us are connected to Bridget. I, in my job, am very connected. I so appreciate having Bridget here. Her commitment to the work and to the students and keeping our kids safe is just huge, so very well deserved. Karen Harris was given the Volunteer Award. She works a lot with our FCRCs all across the district, not just at one school. So she was honored by them, well-deserved awards for both of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Craig. All right. Next is information item. We all received the financial statements, just for review. We'll go ahead and move to our Student Board Representative Report. Sullivan, what do you have for us this evening?
I have a quick update on our Student Advisory Council. We have selected our junior and senior from each school, and we welcome them to the council. We're in the process of collecting information about like times and locations that work best to meet so that we can make a regular meeting happen. We hope to schedule our first meeting in early December, and we will work together to find some key areas of improvement. And we look forward to leading this group and elevating student voice.
That is really good news. Really good news.
Wonderful.
Wonderful. Hello, everybody. So this Wednesday, Sullivan and I will be joining the Board at the Washington State, at the Washington State School Board Director Association Annual Conference in Bellevue. We will attend section with other student representative around the state and bring back information to the new Student Board Representative who will be starting next month. Thank you.
That'll be fun for both of you to attend and be able to be around other student board reps from across the state. And I know that we're all looking forward to it as well.
Of course, yeah.
All right. Board comments? Is there any comments by the school board?
Again, I will be brief. I wanted to say thank you. Being voted in for my first election is an honor, and I'm really happy to be here for the next four years. I'm going to miss you, Victoria. And, you know, it's just, it's just really cool. So I'm looking forward to it, and I'm glad to be here.
Well, congratulations, Jackie.
In the interest of time.
Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you.
I do have just something really quick, but in the interest of time, and I need a break. I was unfortunately not able to be here at last month's school board meeting, which was the first board meeting after the incident at Evergreen High School. I did go back and watch the meeting and a lot of the citizens' comments and a lot of comments that were made. I felt a little bit that some of those were inaccurate. And me not being here, I wasn't able to put my voice into the room, so I just want my voice to be heard really quickly. I am a parent of a student that was in the building that day. So there are people that don't think we can identify with what's going on out there, but I want to let you know that we do. And we were personally involved as my 18-year-old was sitting in the library while in lockdown for all those hours. So as a parent, I can relate and understand. And please understand that we are also parents and we are also going through these challenging times with you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, Victoria, anything? Any final remarks?
I'm drained. I just love everybody here. And I know you have your work cut out for you, but I know that you're the team that can do it. And I want to give a special shout out to our Lori over here, who herds cats on a daily She gets our calls, she keeps us organized. It's not easy keeping track of this group. And she's just a stellar person that I've loved working with. So thank you for everything you've done for me to keep me on track.
All right, Victoria, we know that you'll be keeping a close eye on us, and so we will.
I'm going to be dancing on Tuesday nights.
I'm sure you will be, but we will do our best to make you proud and continue the work that you've set forth. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to future agenda items. Nothing? All right, good. Let's move on to recess. At this time, we will sign documents, and then we're going to reconvene in a board workshop where we're going to do budget engagement. Thank you for attending.